These are important things.
This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over the local access channel eight to the town website at www eastham-ma.gov. Welcome to the December 18th meeting of the Select Board. And we'll start with public and Select Board information. Is there any one of the Select Board members that would like to share anything? Suzanne, on? Jerry, do you want to share? You're muted.
Does she do? Oh, still muted.
Hi, sorry.
You're still muted, can't hear you.
Not you Suzanne.
I hear you, not you Suzanne, Jerry.
Nope.
We don't have you muted on that, do we?
Can we unmute him from here?
I think what you wanted to say was congratulate everybody on light tonight. Is that right? And I thought because you were serving donuts and hot chocolate and we had a very, very good turnout. And as always, Jerry and Ed are there behind the table giving out hot chocolate.
It didn't rain this year?
It didn't rain while I was there, no. No, it didn't. Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on our agenda? Okay, we'll start. First thing is the Climate Action Committee has a presentation for us. Roberta, come on up.
Good evening, everyone, including Jerry and Suzanne off there in Cyberland. I'm here as the Chair of the Climate Action Committee along with John Buini and Olav Heglen and a volunteer in our committee, Jack Hadley. The Climate Action Committee has unanimously, is unanimously recommending that the Select Board include an article in the warrant for the 2024 town meeting to allow Eastham residents to vote on whether to opt in to the new Massachusetts Specialized Energy Code. I do realize you received some documents in your meeting packet and we can go over that after I have a few comments and remarks I'd like to make. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions and research any additional issues that you, that arise tonight. In the meantime, I hope to briefly make a few main points. First, at the 2020 town meeting, Eastham overwhelmingly passed a declaration of climate emergency. The opening session reads, "The town of Eastham recognizes that the climate emergency, driven by human activity, including energy consumption and land use practices, and leading to global warming, rising seas, deadly storms, dangerous heat waves, acidifying oceans, and melting ice sheets poses an imminent threat to the health, safety, and economic security of the residents of the town." Second, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with detailed goals, is helping and encouraging all of us to address this emergency. And a big part of this effort specifies progressive changes to state and town building codes. The focus of these stretch codes has been on increasing energy efficiency in our homes and businesses, and more recently, reducing fossil fuel use and increasing onsite solar and renewable energy, renewable electricity production. The first stretch code, which went into effect in 2009, has been adopted by more than 85% of the cities and towns of Massachusetts, covering 90% of the state's population, through their participation in the Green Communities Act. As a requirement for becoming a green community, Eastham adopted the stretch code in 2021. This year, an updated version of the stretch code automatically went into effect for all green communities, including Eastham and our neighboring towns. Now, the Opt-In Massachusetts Specialized Energy Code that we are supporting provides a couple of additional measures beyond that stretch code update. Towns can choose to adopt the Specialized Energy Code if approved at town meeting, and the committee unanimously recommends that it be presented for approval in May. These updates apply only to what's called mixed fuel construction, and it makes no changes to the code for existing buildings or for new all-electric buildings, no changes. Mixed-fuel homes and buildings which use oil, gas, or propane for heating and appliances generate significant greenhouse gas emissions. Broadly, the proposed Specialized Energy Code requires new mixed-fuel construction to include solar panels where practical and pre-wiring for future electrification. These changes enhance health and comfort and lower heating and cooling costs and add no new taxes or levies. This is a road that the town embarked upon when it adopted the stretch code in 2021. It's clearly the direction that the country, the state, and the Cape are going, and it's up to the people of Eastham to vote on the opportunity to join the 31 Massachusetts communities, including Truro and Wellfleet, that have already opted in. Again, this is our unanimous recommendation in response to an urgent and large-scale challenge. In closing, though I'm sure we all know it by heart, I'd like to quote the second part of our town climate emergency declaration approved by the people of Eastham at the town meeting 2020. It reads, "The town of Eastham therefore adopts as its policy the objective of reducing net greenhouse gas emissions from human activity within and by the town to zero at the earliest technically and economically feasible time, and directs that all officers and departments of the town take such measures within the scope of their respective responsibilities and authority as may be necessary and prudent to facilitate such policy." Thank you, everyone, and as I said earlier, we are here to answer your questions and to see how we might proceed.
More of a comment, I appreciated that you put in questions and responses because, you know, it is a lot of the things we would have asked you anyway. And, you know, it was good to see what, what people would be up against doing this. And like you said, it's actually, reading over this, it's actually cheaper to buy or to build an all-electric home, which is pretty amazing.
The studies seem to conclude that.
Yeah, Habitat's doing it. I mean, that, that.
That's right, to build and even more to live in and to live in year after year considerably less money, yes.
Yeah, no, I think it's very exciting.
Suzanne, Jerry? Jerry, supposedly your mic works, you just have to unmute yourself.
There should be a.
Maybe sign in, go out and sign in again.
There should be a button on the bottom corner, Jerry.
Or check your, your.
Audio.
Check your microphone, go up into preferences and check audio. I do that at home sometimes, and I realize my Bluetooth headphones in the other room are connected to the.
He has a lot to say, too, that's too bad.
Jerry, you can't use that kind of language in a public meeting.
You put it in the chat, maybe.
Oh, yeah, you could type.
You could type it, Jerry, in a chat.
In the Q and A.
Yeah. Maybe it says earbuds.
Oh, text.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes. It was the earbuds. Okay.
I had a feeling.
Small victory.
I have to put my hearing aids in now with this. Okay, the question, I have a question, just first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to congratulate the committee, I think, you volunteers there do a great job and spend a lot of time, and I appreciate it. One other question, you had, if I'm a mixed-use, want to build a mixed-use, I have to put on solar panels if practical, and then the next statement was you have to set up the electric to handle solar panels, et cetera. Is that even if it's impractical to put solar panels on the building at this point, when it's built? For example, it's in the middle of a totally forested lot.
Well, yes, the two things that you're talking about, the solar, that is true, when practical, and that often has to do with where the house is situated relating to the southern exposure or not, and other reasons as well. But the pre-wire, the pre-wiring is to prepare the house for future electrification, essentially, even if you're using mixed fuels, to do it while the house is being constructed is so much easier and cheaper than if afterward you decided you're going electric and, you know, whoever, the present homeowner, the future homeowner, it's all set up, ready to go, and that's the idea behind the pre-wiring.
So, in other words, it'd be pre-wired to set up for a heat pump, for example, if they decide to get rid of the gas, oil, or propane furnace, but it's not really, it's not tied to the solar panels. Solar panels are, if it's practical.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. And this is an all or nothing, right? The town either adopts it in full as the state has created it, or we don't.
Yes, and in your package, you received the model language that the DOER has put together, and it has to be adopted in the exact same language, except we in Wellfleet, we in Wellfleet, we in Eastham would include the chapter relating to our building, our construction, whatever chapter that is, and just put in town of Eastham. But essentially, it has to, my understanding is that it has to be written exactly like this.
All right, thank you.
Suzanne, do you have anything?
I mean, a little, it's not. It's the idea that solar panels are like affordable or accessible, and I understand that there's tax credits and rebates and whatnot, but you still need like thousands of dollars to do that. And I understand that this is targeted at new construction, and at this point in Eastham, if you're going to do new construction, you have the money, and it would maybe not make much of a difference to you, but then it just made me realize that like the people who are building new homes in Eastham are, just the amount of money that you would need to build a new home in Eastham is substantial.
Well, the positive thing when you're building a new house is that it's often associated with a mortgage, and you know what I'm saying? So, yes, you do have the upfront cost of the solar, and you certainly get a really very significant tax credit and rebate from, tax credit from the feds and a rebate from Massachusetts. But whatever's left, you can always roll into the mortgage, so in the end, it's probably not as much a dent as you might think. Not only that, but once you've moved into the house, you're not paying those bills that you would have if you have solar. So, in a way, it balances.
No, I understand that, it's more just a comment on if you're going to build new construction in Eastham, it probably wouldn't be significant to you anyway, just because of the cost of land and building materials, but I guess I just wanted to reiterate that there's a lot of people, even with the tax incentives, that like solar panels are just not an option because they don't have thousands of dollars to spend on solar panels, even if they wanted them, and even if it would be long-term savings over time, they're just not an option. But at that point, it's not an option for you to build a new house in Eastham anyway, so.
Yeah, Suzanne, I'm going to disagree with you a little bit on that with affording solar, because the Mass Solar Loan Program, the way it's set up is you get really good rebates if you're lower income. You get like half of it can be covered, an additional half after that 30% and 10%, or $1,000 from the state, there's an additional savings. And in addition to that, the loan, the solar loan that they give you, the payments are less than your current electric bill. So, there's no out-of-pocket money that has to happen, and it really is a win-win. It isn't, it isn't a lot out of pocket. I mean, you can buy them outright also if you want to, but the Mass Solar Loan Program is fabulous, and the installers can talk you right through it. And I know they did a presentation at the library, I'm not sure if they covered some of that with the financing or not.
Somewhat, yeah.
But somewhat, yeah, but I think that is something people really need to learn about because it really is a great, great program.
Yes, and much of it is about getting the information out to folks.
Right.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah, just to kind of like pick up what you were saying, Suzanne, because I think, you know, we all know that you can roll it into a mortgage, we all know that you can do these things and that it doesn't become an immediate expense, but the, I think, the concern place that we're coming from, especially being, you know, kind of in the population and age bracket that we are, and dealing with a lot of kind of people that exist in this in-between income level, they're not low-income, they don't qualify for these extra incentives. They're almost like this working-class poor that isn't poor and doesn't qualify for any benefits for someone who's low-income, but kind of incurs all of these little additional costs that just kind of add up over time. And it kind of goes back to like even at a prior meeting, I was concerned about a 1.5% added tax on a hotel room. It's not much, right? But it's these little tiny increases that add up over time and fall on the same shoulders of the same population, and that's the population that we're losing, and I think that's what, where Suzanne's concern maybe comes from, is that it's those few people that maybe aren't these, you know, well-to-do, rich people that are coming in, buying land and building big houses that can afford it without issue, but it's the people who can just get that piece of land and like are just going to be able to build this house, and now we have to consider adding just a little more on top of just being able to do that. And so that's where the concern comes in. In the end, the fact that is that this goes to town meeting and the residents can decide if they want to do this or not, and I'm always, you know, reluctant to put my thought in front of a town vote, and I feel like a town vote will be the most indicative response to something like this, you know? So I think it's important to hear the concerns about these small, little added costs that do build up on working-class folks in town, but at the same time, in the end, that's what town meeting is for. So, I think this is presented well, and I think that, you know, it's up to the town after a certain point, so.
Paul, can I put you on the spot? Can you comment on this since you're going to have to enforce it if it is?
He's not the building inspector.
He's not going to enforce anything.
He's not going to.
The building inspector.
Well, the building inspector works in his organization, so, excuse me.
Okay. Sorry, Paul.
This is why we talked about the increasing the fees, because this is the way that the billing code is going. I mean, we're going to get increasing efficiencies and, you know, smart growth green. Doesn't mean there's not going to be some complexities in integrating and interpreting the code, but again, that's part of the service we provide through the Building Inspection Services Department, so for me, it's really, I look at it, it's a policy issue if the Select Board wants to, you know, endorse this and ultimately has to be approved by the town, town meeting, if that's what the community wants. Our job is to, you know, take that on and we'll do our best to not really enforce it, but it's really just working with the new code and helping people through it and interpreting it. So, again, it comes with some challenges, but it's just the way it's going anyway, so it's really inevitable. I don't see any real issues going forward, so.
Okay, thank you. Jamie? Art? Jerry?
Go ahead.
Yeah, one question, maybe Roberta can help on this. Is it possible to try and get some information directly from builders in the Eastham area whether or not it's cheaper to build an all-electric home versus one with gas, oil, or propane heat? And if so, kind of an idea of how much less expensive, if in fact it is, is that possible to do for the, for the committee to try and get us, get that kind of information, which I think would be great information to have for a town meeting if it goes before the town?
Well, Jerry, we have reached out to builders and contractors, not just in Eastham, but in Wellfleet and Truro as well, and as you would expect, we have mixed response to it. I think in general, many contractors simply don't like additional regulations because it makes it harder to do your job, you know, in general. And yet, there's others that, that we've talked to who clearly understand the advantages to this, they see that this is the way it's going anyway, and especially have a lot of clients who really are very forward-thinking in electrifying their homes because, A, because they understand the importance of doing it for the planet, but also they see it as a less expensive way to operate their homes. And so, we're hearing both. Jack, if you felt you wanted to add anything to this?
No, I think Roberta did.
All right, so, yes, we have reached out.
Yeah, I think that whether they agree, agree or not, that's, that's an important factor, but is it less expensive to construct? Is the thing that, did they tell you, give you that information, is it less expensive for a brand-new home to just make it all-electric or to make it mixed-use? You got, you have electricity in the house and you have to have a fossil fuel type of heating arrangement?
Well, first of all, Art, I don't think there are a lot of contractors who have had experience, except other than with the stretch code, all right? The, the Specialized Energy Code went into effect in Wellfleet and Truro just this year, so this is all new for, for everyone. But in conversations with them, I think sometimes there's that give and take about what's the difference between paying for a, like a gas furnace versus a heat pump?
Yeah, a heat pump.
Right. And then the argument is like, are you also including all of the incentives you get from the government when you buy that heat pump, which is significant? Plus, that heat pump includes your air conditioning. So, sometimes it's kind of like a conversation of what really, what really in the end does, does a heat pump seem more expensive when it's covering all of those things for you? Again, it's, it's mixed opinions on it.
All right, thank you, thanks.
One more thing, though, there have been a number of studies outside of the Cape done by the Department of Energy Resources relating to the building of net-zero homes and electrification, and they have found it really, if there is an increase, it's about 1% for residential property, maybe more for larger commercial buildings, but for a residential building, it's about 1% increase to do a net-zero building.
Okay, Jamie, then Suzanne.
Just kind of like what Jerry was saying, I think it might be helpful for residents to see some type of thing where they can see the numbers of like, this is what it would be to build under the old regulation, this is how much it would be to build the same house under these new codes, and, and if you felt compelled to add a 10-year timeline of how that would play out, because that sounds like that's a big piece of this, it's more that, it's obviously more than just the upfront cost, and that's what's so important to make transparent to people so that they don't feel like there's something hidden in there if they're going to understand it. My only reluctant, it's, it's tough, I still don't even know how I would vote on this personally, only because this is something someone could just do, right? Like, you can, you can just do this if you want to, there's no regulation that says you can't. It's the idea that the regulation says you have to, and that's the difference that I think is, is what you're going to have your job cut out for you when it comes to communicating things to the town.
Thank you, that's very useful.
Suzanne?
I will say that I do appreciate all the, like you footnoted and cited all of the sources, and that was helpful, and I noticed that it said something about, oh, where was it? The cannot be added to the value of the home. Massachusetts prohibits adding the value of the renewable energy equipment to home assessments for a period of 20 years, and I was wondering when that started, like when the.
So, that's the solar, you're talking about you can't add the solar, because then you're not taxed on it. Like your property, your assessment, your property tax assessment, it doesn't, yeah.
Go up.
Well, and.
It's not valued higher for.
Right, so.
So, but it has to do with like the assessed value of a property.
It does.
So, after the 20 years, in, if your home has solar panels, does that mean you will then have a higher assessed value of the home? Is it from the installation date, or is it from like 20, 20 years from one set date for all of Massachusetts?
Well, I do not know the answer, I can, I can try to find out for you.
And then, do we have any idea what solar panels on a property adds to the assessed value?
I don't, I don't know if there's any strong statistics on that. I've read that because I was putting solar panels on, and I was wondering if that was a positive reason for me to add panels to my house, and I read somewhere that it believes that it increases maybe, it may be, maybe 5%, 10% to the assessment, not the assessment, but to the market value, market value of your property, not necessarily assessed, since it's not, my understanding, it can't be add to the assessed value. If you put solar panels, that can't be added to the assessed value of what you're taxed on.
Right, what?
Okay.
Suzanne, after 20 years, the solar panel's value is significantly diminished because they lose, the, the efficiency drops to about 80% after 20 years, so that they're, they're down. My, just for you and for anybody listening, my insurance, my home insurance company, because added value to, for replacement value for the house for the solar panels, but it was basically how much it would cost, cost to put on, put on the solar panels. So I had that increase in my house insurance, but no increase, of course, in the assessed value because of it.
Well, I agree with Jamie, I think this is something that we need to let the residents, the town decide, so should we have a motion to create, put this on the warrant?
So, yeah, it's a bylaw, so it has to go through public hearings and that sort of thing with the planning.
So, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the bylaw for the 2024 warrant.
Yeah, for the Specialized Energy Code.
Specialized Energy Code.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? We'll vote, Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Very good, thank you very much, Roberta, very enlightening.
Thank you. One final question?
Sure.
At what point does the Select Board offer its own recommendations vote on the warrants? Would that be something in the future?
March.
March, okay. So, would it be helpful to then perhaps provide more information to some of the questions you were asking tonight?
Before March, yeah, definitely.
Sure, I think it'd be great that you, if it does get on the warrant and does go to get, go to vote, it'd be great for us to include that information so the residents can understand those costs.
Okay, all right.
Right, and Roberta, the Finance Committee will also vote on it, so you might want to give them the same information.
All right, and you'd recommend perhaps even some point between now and March presenting to the Finance Committee on this?
Absolutely.
Sure, sure.
Great.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So, the next steps, Roberta, and for the committee would be that I'll take the draft bylaw that you've given us, and I'm going to send that to council, council will tell Council will tell us where it fits in our bylaws, and then I'll forward it to Paul. For, what?
The general bylaw, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't need to have a public hearing.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay. But I'll send it anyway.
I see.
When you say a public hearing, what does that encompass?
Public hearing means that we put it on, we advertise it two weeks ahead of time, we put it on an agenda, and the public has the ability to come and speak pro or con. You know, they get to ask questions, they get to comment on it.
Would it be along with other articles, or is it just this one?
Usually, it is grouped with other business, yeah. And as Paul said, you know, sometimes it's done with the Planning Board if it's a zoning article, if it's a general bylaw, we're not required to have it. But we usually discuss it several times anyway, so...
So, it would probably be clustered with others?
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay.
Plus, if it is on the warrant, we have a public meeting before a town meeting to go over all the items on the warrant and explain them.
Those are two separate meetings, so...
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Next up is Hillary for the opioid presentation.
Good evening. Hello. I brought with me Alex Nelson. She's the Network Coordinator for Outer Cape Community Solutions. And I think we were here before you, I want to say, late summer, but it could have been in the middle of the summer. And we talked about our regional partnerships, and this is one of the projects that we're bringing forward. It's the opioid settlement money, and we've worked closely with the four Outer Cape towns and some of our network partners to come up with a plan that we're going to present to you tonight. So, I'm going to turn it over to Alex. We're really excited to present this finally. It seems like it's taken a long time to get here. We've been at this, I want to say, almost a year, so this is exciting.
Thank you. Yeah, it just about has been a year. I recognize that it's a pretty full agenda, too, so I will hurry through this. It's a lot of content, a lot of information. I think you've read some of it already, but I think we've found that it works really well if you just ask questions during the presentation, if that works for you all. So, feel free to just jump in. But as Hillary mentioned, I'm Alex Nelson from Outer Cape Community Solutions. We're a rural health network. We partner with nonprofits, healthcare agencies, many different partners in the Outer Cape, doing exactly this, pulling together different groups of folks to have conversations and work towards systemic solutions around health and health equity challenges. Of course, we're really lucky as a network also to partner with OC Wellness Collaborative, which is the formal title of the four-town partnership across the health departments. And the idea is to break down these town barriers so that folks from all across the Outer Cape can take part in other public health advantages and programs that are happening in the Outer Cape towns. The plan for today is to talk very briefly about the money, where this money is coming from, then mention just who is on this work group, give you a little context there, then dive into the proposal, go over each of the eight different components, and then the next steps. We do have two motions that we're seeking this evening. So, some background around these funds, I'm sure you've read about them in the paper. These are these national settlements that are coming from the opioid distributors and manufacturers. So, this is billions of dollars coming into our communities. Actually, Massachusetts alone gets $500 million, and that's dispersed through our municipalities. Based on a variety of different factors, towns receive different amounts, so based on impact, population, et cetera. Because this is obviously such a huge project and undertaking, there are recommendations coming from the state and the county. So, they're recommending to pool funds with area municipalities, which we're pleased to do, as well as involving people impacted by substance use disorder in the conversations, making sure you don't have conversations "about us," "without us," quote-unquote. Spending the funds on substance use-related projects that actually directly impact people, so being in the community, having programming, and of course, using evidence-based solutions. What does this look like specifically on the Outer Cape? The funding breakdown is such that the companies will be sending money over 18 payments over the next 17 years. So, the numbers that are being dropped into the accounts every year look really different, but I can say that through fiscal year '39, across the four towns, there will be $621,100. As I said, it's dispersed every year in different amounts, and the funds will always roll over. So, as of right now, September 2023, actually, we have $153,292 across the four towns, and you can see the breakdown there, and the percentage breakdown as well. So, one of the other components, and you'll see this as a thread through the proposal, is that we are focusing on four major areas. They are harm reduction, recovery, treatment, and prevention. This is the same landscape that the county uses in all of their substance use prevention work. Harm reduction, of course, encouraging safer practices to reduce fatality. Recovery is improving wellness associated with abstinence. Treatment is the medical side of that, and prevention, of course, keeping folks away from using substances in the first place. So, what does this look like for the work group? As Hillary said, we've actually been meeting just about a year, can't believe it, but monthly since January, a variety of different stakeholders have been meeting and having conversations around possibilities, opportunities, what could we do? Want to be really clear that the folks we're talking to actually have lived experience themselves, some of them, whether it's personally in their own lives or with family members. Also, they all work with folks on the Outer Cape living with substance use disorder, so they are the experts in the field out this way. Specifically, we're talking about Aid Support Group of Cape Cod, based in Provincetown, of course, but with other locations in the Upper and Mid-Cape. First Steps Together is a state program that has a chapter from Cape Cod Children's Place, and I'll talk a little bit more about them in a minute. Outer Cape Health Services and their recovery services. Of course, OC Wellness Collaborative, the health departments. And we did also work with Public Safety. Truro Police Department and Wellfleet Police Department were consistently in the meetings, but I can say, and Hillary can speak to this, we did have some input from Public Safety. Sergeant Josh Adams has been involved in some of the conversations around this, too.
I did talk with both of our chiefs, the Fire Department Chief and the Police Department Chief, and we shared with them the plan and did seek their input in this, so they're on board.
Yeah. Just a list, list of names if you're interested and curious. Again, the process that we went over in the last year is gathering perspectives, different experiences, because everyone has a different take on what the landscape looks like out here. What are the gaps that exist in our rural community, being so far from so many other resources? And what are the opportunities we have in our close-knit, supportive, community-based area? What can we do? And of course, centering access and equity, and all of this work has been so critical, making sure that regardless of transportation, of job status, of immigration status, of how many children you have, you have access to these programs and resources. So, really wanting to uplift access for any and all folks across the four towns. I also want to make some space to recognize that because there's been a historical lack of data, there's been a lack of resources in this community, we're really excited to have the opportunity over the next year to do some really intentional and deep data collection work. We've been having conversations about data collection since day one with our partners. How are we really going to deepen our understanding of what we're facing on the Outer Cape, and how will we allow that to continue to inform the work that we do?
Can I jump in for one second?
Yeah, of course.
I did present this work plan to the Board of Health, I think it was last Monday night, and they were also very interested in data collection to make sure that the programming that we're providing is actually serving the needs of the Eastham residents as well as the other residents on the Outer Cape. So, they asked that we come back with some data in six months and a year to evaluate how the programming is going.
And the plan for tonight is for the next six months, fiscal year 2024. We anticipate we'll have some data after six months, even better after 18. So, you'll certainly, you can hear from us in six months and see what we have to say. And the proposal, what are the specifics? I want to again highlight these four areas, because this is how we built this proposal, and all of those recommendations that came from the state and county, we've involved in this planning process as well. So, I'll go over just briefly what those eight things are, then I'll dive a little more into content, then I'll take a step back and just look at the funds one more time. So, here is the breakdown. $25,000 towards harm reduction, $1,200 for treatment, $8,800 for recovery, $3,865 for prevention, and an additional $3,000 for transportation, about the equity and access piece. So, this is where a lot of questions come up, too, about the content. So, like I said, feel free to jump in with any thoughts. So, harm reduction, I want to highlight that we're really fronting a lot of funds for our harm reduction, specifically because we know that this is an area that we don't have a lot of information around. We're not super familiar with the ins and outs yet of the landscape around substance use on the Outer Cape. These agencies are making a commitment to do this work, to get to know the folks who are living and managing their substance use. And so, harm reduction is a really wonderful way to do that, to build connections, to build trust with folks in this community, so that if and when they're ready, they can move into treatment or recovery as well. So, what this means for us is that they would have their mobile outreach van on the Outer Cape every day, which is huge, because this is a unit that can not only park in a parking lot and consistently be in one spot, but it can also drive to people's homes and meet them there. They can provide all their services on the van, just about everything they can do in office, and it's this one-on-one consultation and supporting people wherever they are on their journey. Also, of course, functional outreach, getting Narcan, they're the number-one supplier of Narcan on the Outer Cape for a lot of folks, I think, including Public Safety. And they've also said that they would create the outreach materials for us, so that we could have someone consistently printing and creating outreach for all of the opioid work that we're doing out here. And discretionary funds, which I'll touch on in just one moment with another agency. Treatment from Outer Cape Health, this is a program that's typically covered through health insurance, so the additional funds would allow them to have some additional programming that's not typically covered by health insurance. So, we're talking about movement therapy, sound therapy, art therapy, hiring local contractors and professionals to support their clients through these other alternative modalities of healing.
So, I have a question about that one?
Yes.
For the amount, is that just for the whole year total for all clients, or is that per person?
They, that funding is just to contract with the professional. So, it would be an hourly fee, and it's for the next six months. And I believe they would host these courses every, I want to say, every two weeks they would have these additional courses, but it's just for the hourly fee for those contractors.
So, does that limit the number of participants in it? Or is, I was, so it's group counseling that involves those other movement, sound, art, and they're going to run it, and then people come to it? Is that...
So, this is, the structured outpatient addiction program is something that they run on their own. This is something that they have their own structure around. I'm not sure of what their numbers typically look like for enrollment. Historically, it's been on Zoom, but some of these things they're excited to be able to offer in their Wellfleet location as that center continues to grow. So, I'm not sure about the number of participants of this. The way that they proposed this to us was, like I said, just about paying the contractors. Yeah, Jamie?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I have a question on that. So, in essence, what you do, what's happening is we are, and I don't know the exact what you've done, we're contracting out with SOAP to be the manager of this program, of their own program, but we're to be part of this collaborative program that we have. Is that what it really is?
I think actually what we're doing is adding additional programming to what they're already offering, because the insurance covers what they're already offering. It does not cover the movement, the sound, the art, and the acupuncture, and the mindfulness. And so, those are the programs we're bringing to the SOAP program, because when we looked at information from communities not on the Outer Cape, these services were utilized by these folks.
Okay, I understand. And I have one question back, because I didn't hit my mute button fast enough on the harm. So, the Aid Support Group is the organization that will be feet on the ground on this harm reduction program?
Yes. And so, just to be clear, too, the nature of the network is not to have programming directly coming from us. We're working with our partners who already specialize in this work, who already do this, who have the resources already, just with a little additional funding, can take it that extra mile and roll out additional programming. So, they already have this mobile outreach van. It operates exclusively on the Upper Cape, sometimes the Mid-Cape. It's not ever on the Outer Cape, so this would be a first for them, and this funding would allow them to have a new presence out here.
Thanks.
Yeah, great question. Thank you.
Just a quick question. So, with the treatment at the Outer Cape, so if someone was using those services, there's no additional cost to them, right? There's no, they don't pay per session at all?
Correct.
Okay. It just seems, I think maybe what Suzanne was saying, too, $1,200 doesn't seem like a lot, given medical bills and seeing what they charge for things, and I'm like, what, how many people are going to be served? Like, three? I don't know, but I'm sure...
An acupuncturist for three hours or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you for getting clear, and I appreciate Hillary's clarification. This is a program they're running, so...
Yeah, that helped. Thanks.
Now, another component of the recovery is this First Steps Together program, which I mentioned briefly. This is a state program. It's state-funded primarily, and we're lucky to have a branch from Cape Cod Children's Place that operates. So, these are folks, these are recovery coaches who build connections and relationships with parents of young children. So, whether or not the children are in the home, if they are parents, if they have young children, and if the parents are managing substance use disorder, they're entitled to this totally free program. So, again, this is state-funded. The additional funding that we would offer here are for discretionary funds. We find, especially in areas where, in rural communities, right, where things cost a little more, where it's a little bit harder to get places, these discretionary funds can go so far. Discretionary funds are those, they're funds that go towards little, random, frustrating costs that come up, right? Your car breaks down, you need to get a cab. If you don't have a place to stay that night, maybe they can get you a tent. These are these little things that come up, these costs, these flexible costs that the recovery coaches can say, okay, you're having this need, let's meet it right now with some funds. Back to the data component, we're really looking forward to seeing what funds are being spent on, both for Aid Support Group and for First Steps Together, because we want to be able to see, are there any patterns, are there consistencies? And therefore, are there any other more sustainable ways that we can meet these needs for these families, rather than just continuing to put Band-Aids on these consistent problems?
I think maybe it's also important just to point out that through our Navigator service, we do offer discretionary funds through that program also. So, that was sort of the model for these discretionary funds. So, it's a program we're already utilizing.
Thank you, yeah. Another recovery component is with this wonderful recovery coach from Eastham, actually. Rita Lettsos, she is a recovery coach at Outer Cape Health, and she also has experience teaching recovery yoga. So, this is a weekly, evidence-based, trauma-informed yoga specifically for folks in the recovery community. Because she already works in recovery out here, she's got a list of folks who are eager to sign up for these classes as well. Similarly, this recovery yoga here is a 12-step program, and it's specifically for the 18 to 25 range. So, this is an age for whom there's just not a ton of resources, especially on the Outer Cape, right? So, being able to offer recovery to this age bracket, this demographic, is really, really critical for the recovery conversation. It's very similar to Rita Lettsos's model, however, this does have a 12-step model. I want to highlight that WellStrong is actually an agency that is doing this work full-time. They're based on the Upper Cape. They're a wellness center specifically created to support folks with substance use. So, we're thrilled to be able to bring their great model and resources and mission to the Outer Cape through this program. This would also allow us to contract with them for some prevention work, specifically for that young population, that teen population. So, this would be a short series of other socio, or pro-social emotional regulation classes, so talking about breathwork, yoga, and dance, similar to what we were looking at with that treatment model. But this would be taught by their professionals specifically for that teen demographic.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
For the ones, I mean, I guess I'm wondering how this will be advertised for the six-week series. Specifically, do people need to sign up in advance? Does, is it drop-in? Do they need to come for all six weeks? And then, I guess, how it gets advertised?
That's a great question. We had that question the other day in Provincetown. It's, we're having some tech trouble, I see, but I can say that we're already running a teen wellness program. We're not modeling it after the prevention approach, but this is a free drop-in teen class. And the approach and the reason for that was a pro-social environment for teens to connect, come, a safe place that's outside of school, to interact and engage with other folks. So, we've had a lot of success marketing that on social media. That's been a really great way to get parents of that community involved. Yeah, social media, we've put it out in the newspapers, spread it out across our network with all of our many, many hundreds of great folks who are living and working in this community out here in the Outer Cape. Had a lot of people spread the word that way as well. So, we've got the channels, we have the avenues. Again, working with so many partners, that's been really successful for us. I anticipate that it would be a similar outreach strategy. My understanding is that this would also be a drop-in model. I haven't confirmed that with WellStrong. This is, like I said, a program that they've run before, but that's my understanding.
And then, I was wondering where, where these classes will be?
Yeah.
If that is known at this time.
Yes. So, I can say that the PAM class, which I'll talk about in one moment, this will be offered in Eastham at the library. It looks like recovery yoga will also be offered in Eastham. That's with Rita Lettsos, that's the adult recovery yoga. The teen class is offered in Wellfleet. I have a slide in just a moment that has the locations of the other ones, but we're making sure that the programming is spread across the four Outer Cape towns equally. Yeah, great question. And the transportation contract, I'll touch on that in just a moment, but that's another component of that access piece. So this PAM class here, like I said, in Eastham and at the library, it's a six-week series, similarly to the WellStrong program. Another pro-social opportunity, but exclusively focused on art. And really excited to say that an Outer Cape Health Behavioral Health Specialist will also be sitting in on these classes as well. So we get that additional resource, and that's just something that Outer Cape Health is excited to offer as part of this program.
So this one is also focused on the 13 to 17-year-old age range?
Yes, thank you. So another opportunity for teens in prevention work. And then finally, this is accessibility piece, wanting to make sure that if you are in Eastham and you're interested in going to a program in Provincetown, you have a free way to get there. This is a contract for us with a cab company. We've done this before for other programming, which I'll touch on, some of that other programming in just a minute. But wanting to make sure that anyone who would like to go can go. There's no transportation barriers in that regard. So those are the eight different components. Are there any other content questions that have bubbled up for folks before I just kind of circle back? Okay.
I have another question about, so you have the six-week, 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 and I was wondering if they're staggered throughout the year, or if they're all going to, like, run at the same time?
The plan at this point is to stagger. I'll be honest, we've been eagerly awaiting to get these motions passed at these four meetings to make any final timeline decisions. So depending on how tonight goes, this is our fourth meeting, so maybe we can have some more specifics about that. But the plan is to spread them out as much as possible. And again, this proposal is just for the next six months through June 30th. So we'll, we'll spread it out across that six months. And then depending on the data that we collect in these six months, depending on what the agencies say, the contractors say, we'll see what fiscal year '25 would look like. And we'll certainly come back with that timeline if and when it's appropriate.
I have a question about the outreach van. You said that they have a van that visits other places. Does this mean that there will be a van in the Outer Cape every day?
Yes, that's, that's the agreement that we have, that they would be here daily. And they're looking for places to park. So if you have any thoughts for this unmarked van to safely park, that would, that would be great.
Overnight, you mean, or?
Not overnight. They would be, they're, it's, it's like an office, it's like an-
Meet people.
To meet people.
A place to meet people.
Yeah, like an office on wheels. So during the day, or they're flexible with their hours, too. So if there was a place that wanted to host them from five to seven every other Tuesday, they would make arrangements for that to work for them.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Couple, I just have a couple final thoughts. I want to also highlight the things that we're already investing in, the programs we're already doing that complement this work. As you know, the town of Eastham is serving as the fiscal agent for these ARPA funds, and that means that there will be a full-time town nurse and a full-time behavioral health clinician for the four Outer Cape towns. Really excited to see how these other positions, in addition to that Navigator contract, how they can support the rollout and the uplifting of these programs through the opioid project as well. Nalox boxes are something that we're excited to have gotten from a grant from UVM. These are little boxes that look like AEDs. They're just posted on walls, and they're full of Narcan, totally free, no questions asked, anyone can grab it. We're finding that that's a really critical harm reduction method for reducing overdoses these days. Outer Cape Community Solutions continues to meet. As I mentioned, we're in touch with literally hundreds of people sending out emails, in touch, having monthly meetings, so continuing to celebrate and uplift whatever kind of great programming is happening through those partners. Want to also mention the community programs that are happening, Winter Wednesdays in the four Outer Cape towns. This is the second year that we're bringing this free adult programming into Eastham, Wellfleet, and Truro. It's historically just been offered in Provincetown. So check it out, January 7th, or that first or second week in January, that'll start. But that's free pro-social adult programming, again, with transportation provided, and that teen program in Wellfleet that I mentioned. This month is Herbalism with a local nutritionist, if you know any teens looking for a thing to do on a Thursday afternoon. And of course, communication, we continue to meet, the health agents and I meet every other week. We have a lot of transparency around what public health work we're doing and wanting to be really clear about where these funds are going. That's really critical, especially since we're partnered in this work. Back to the conversation around where things are. The Outer Cape Health work, like I said, is on Zoom, and the First Steps Together and AIDS Support Group programs are mobile, so those can go wherever folks are. Provincetown, the idea is to host the WellStrong Young Adult Wellness. Truro is planning to host the WellStrong Teen Yoga. Wellfleet is, currently has the teen classes, and the Outer Cape Health location also, they have an office there, of course. And Eastham having the teen classes and recovery yoga there. And of course, uplifting that transportation contract so folks can get wherever they need to go.
I have another question. You mentioned the, oh man, naloxa boxes?
Yeah.
The box, is, where is that? Like, do you have it, is there a resource somewhere where someone's like, I would love to know where all these boxes are? And they can go somewhere and be like, this is a list of where all of those boxes are? Is one question.
Great.
And two, if they've considered adding testing strips to that as well? And then, I guess, the third question is, is there a centralized kind of, like, location that we can point people to for all of this programming and where it will be that isn't, hey, it's in our select board packet?
Yes.
And I'm sure you're going to, I'm just wondering, like, where it will live for public consumption.
Yeah. Do you want to jump in about the Eastham location?
Yeah, so we have two nalox boxes that we've received, and I talked to the chiefs about that, and we thought that Town Hall and the library would be our two best locations. We're not 100% committed to that yet because I still want to solicit some more comments from folks, but we want to put them somewhere where people can access them, where they're comfortable going to access them, and they don't feel threatened to access them. So we want to make them really accessible with sort of low visibility.
Yeah, great. And just on Friday, we were actually talking about getting clear about where all of these boxes are, because there are boxes in all four Outer Cape towns now. Provincetown has theirs posted, and the other three towns, they're making plans. So the idea absolutely is to have one solid list that people can see where all of these boxes are. And this is in conjunction with a consistent, ongoing campaign to get more Narcan in folks in public safety, right? Making sure that public safety has as much as they need or want. And if they need to get more, they can reach out to our partners there, having it in restaurants. So this is, we've, we're definitely increasing our Narcan distribution. In regards to the test strips, I can say they are really, really expensive. Last I heard, and I could be mistaken, but I believe each test strip was about $10. So these funds that we get for AIDS Support Group will provide those test strips for us. Absolutely. It's definitely something we're considering, putting those test strips in those boxes. And those, that van, wherever they could park, and if it's in a consistent place, that could be a place that you could direct someone if they wanted to get Narcan, if they didn't know where to find a box, or if they wanted to get those test strips, they could get those from the AIDS Support Group van that would be on the Outer Cape, too. And in regards to where we can find this information, Outer Cape Community Solutions does have a website in the landing page for all of this opioid stuff. And as we're building, as these programs get finalized, we will have a QR code that we put on those nalox boxes so folks can quickly access this information. And those resources that AIDS Support Group will be creating will also have the QR codes and link people to these resources, primarily online, but AIDS Support Group, of course, has offered to print, that's built into that cost as well. So if it's something that, for instance, the health departments want to have in their office, those printed resources, we could totally make that happen, too.
You all are so thoughtful. Thanks. Continue.
Thank you, thank you. So what does this specifically mean? And I'm sorry, I'm going a little over time here, but great questions. The four town contribution for the next six months is $41,865. Now, split through the four towns, you can see the percentage breakdown there. For Eastham, that's $11,152.50. The funds will roll over. You can see in the far-right column what is already in the bank for Eastham, and there's more coming every year, as I said. So that's the specific ask for the next six months, and anticipating that we're looking forward to data collection and looking forward to already starting conversations around our plan for fiscal year '25. So this next, these next steps, as I've said, we've already been in front of Boards of Health. The three other select boards have approved these plans. This is our final meeting here tonight to see if we can move forward with these programs and plans, and then, of course, planning for fiscal year '25. So the two motions tonight that we're seeking are to accept these potential program proposals, and then also to have the town administrator direct the health department staff to continue working with each other so that we can continue conversations around regionalized spending, specifically around opioid funding.
I have, I have one question back on the finances, the slide before.
Sure.
Or, yeah. So we already, Eastham has received $40,000, $41,000 already, and that's in a, an account that we, that you're asking us to authorize to pull $11,000 out of that? Is that how it is? Or is this $11,000 funds that will come out of the town budget?
No, it's going to come out of the money that is allocated specifically for the opioid remediation. So it has to be spent on the specific four areas, so it's no new money coming from the town.
Right, so it basically doesn't affect the town budget at this point. Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Correct. Yeah.
The only other thing I want to say is that we're hopeful that we're going to begin to roll these programs out in January. So that was the urgency in getting before you and getting before the Board of Health.
Yes, on this very full agenda. So thank you for having us. Are there any other questions?
No, I guess we'll need a couple motions.
I'll go ahead and make the first motion to accept the 2024 programming proposal from Outer Cape Opioid Working Group.
Second?
I'll-
Whoa, not everybody at once.
All right, any discussion? Okay, we can vote on that, Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And the chairs an aye. And then on motion number two.
Motion number two, to have the town administrator direct the health department staff to continue working with Eastham, Wellfleet, Truro, and Provincetown counterparts to develop a memorandum of agreement regionally pooling opioid settlement resources to develop programming and share in the oversight and implementation.
I'll second that. Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Oh, you can go ahead, Jerry.
No, no, go ahead, Jamie, you go.
Hillary has a question.
It's you, Jerry.
Hillary wants to ask a question.
It's me? Okay, the question, the question on this would, the, the goal on this would be to, in essence, I think the number was 151,000, let's just use that number, so that the town collectively will use the entire hundred, have the $151,000 to use among the four, the four towns. It's not that the $40,000 is going to be spent at Eastham or the $46,000 in Provincetown. We're going to look at, the goal there is to get the four towns to look at and spend the entire, well, I guess eventually through FY '39, the entire $600,000, but spend it
Together.
Throughout the four towns, together, throughout the four towns, and not specifically, this part has to be Eastham, this part's Wellfleet, et cetera.
Correct, correct. So by fiscal year '39, we'll collectively have $621,000 and some odd change. The thought is that if we work together, we can accomplish more and provide more services. Now, when we talked about the MOU within the last couple weeks, it was important to me that we have a way to evaluate how this is working so that we're not locked in until 2039 if it shows that Eastham residents aren't utilizing any services in Provincetown and Truro, and we might need to retool. So we are going to put language into an MOU, which you'll obviously see, that allows for a review and for us to reevaluate if it's not going as we expected.
Right, and the MOU would come through the board, whatever the board is constituted, when it comes through, they would have to approve that MOU?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and is there any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do have one, one question maybe for Jackie.
I'm ready.
Don't be shy, Suzanne.
Okay. I didn't realize I had so many questions until you gave this presentation. So I opened an email at some point from Nass Municipal Association and something, something about money and changes. And I feel like there was something about taking these funds and putting them in their own account. But then they were, they were like, oh, you don't have to create its own account. Maybe you could do it this other way. And so, anyway, it would be really great if someone knew more about it than what I gathered from the email to clarify that for me. That'd be great.
Basically, since it was a new, it was a new thing, right? We didn't have opioid settlement funds, and they're here for a period of time, and they're here with specific amounts of money. So the towns throughout the Commonwealth got a memorandum, which basically tells us how to secure the funds in a separate way, not spend them in any other way until it's voted to spend them.
Do we need to do anything?
Yeah, there's a couple, there's a couple of fiscal mechanisms. There's one go before town meeting, one is handled in the budget process, and Rich can walk you through those choices. We were just assuming we would do what's most convenient for us fiscally in terms of fitting into what we already do with segregated funds and then handle it from there. But I can have him go over it with you because honestly, I don't remember the details of what we decided to do. I do know that Tina has segregated the funds, and that is the amount of money we have set aside.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just thought I'd ask since.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Should move on to licensing? Jackie has a preamble for us?
Just a tiny preamble. I am asking you, or we are asking you, to approve these five business license groups tonight. We have a couple of issues with, we have issues with at least two of them that we still need to work on, but because this is the final meeting in 2023, I would ask your trust in that you vote these licenses, and we will hold the ones that we're having some issues with until they comply with the terms.
Are we okay with that?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the renewal applications for common vixeler, all alcohol on premise, beer, wine, and malt on premise, and annual entertainment renewal.
For the businesses as stated.
For, yeah, for Joey's Joint, Ragosa, Chocolate Cafe, The Scallop Truck, and Willie's World Wellness Conference Center.
Can I give a second?
Contention on them?
Yes.
Having all of the things.
Yeah.
Second.
She was choking on her cookie, I think.
No, is, was she choking, or did she recuse herself because of the chocolate cafe?
Oh, maybe.
No, she's choking on her cookie.
She didn't say, yeah.
Let's just move along, Jerry.
Let's just move along. Jackie wants to move along.
I want to move along now.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
And I think if she were here, she would have recused herself from the chocolate cafe.
Yeah, we'll do 401 on that one.
Well, she wasn't here, so.
Yeah, so she's in abstain because she-
Oh, you're true. You're right.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the flag policy.
Oh, my dear God.
Oh, my dear God.
Yes.
So basically, if you're a federal government, state government, or a POW or Veterans Association, you can fly a flag on town property. Am I saying that correct?
That's it.
You're not, you can't. That's all, we needed to have a flag policy, and now we have one, so we're voting on that. So any questions?
I move the flag policy as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm anye, okay.
And we are adding a flagpole during the town hall renovation. Just wanted to let you know that the town hall flagpole is coming back.
To that spot or over?
No, we're going to move it towards the front door, yeah.
Right.
All right, Department Fee Hearing.
This isn't really a hearing. These are two fees that work, two groups of fees that got left out of our first pass at the fee hearing, and both of them will be, both of these will move forward to the public hearing on February 5th? If you so, if you agree. And the vital amendment fee, Kayla and I had to talk to Linda Sassy because we didn't know what that is. So if someone has a mistake made on their vital records for some reason, and they can prove that a mistake was made, then that has to, that change has to be made throughout their vital records and on the state computers. So it takes a little research and time, and so that's why that's changing. I don't think we've changed that fee, and I have no idea, maybe since the 30s, I don't know. And then the one-day liquor license charge, we are making that the same as the one-day entertainment license. For some reason, we did one at 50 and one at 25, and it didn't make sense. And sometimes we waive those, both of those fees for nonprofits anyway, just so you know. And I think that's it.
Dog tag.
Oh, yeah, the dog tag.
Why, I mean, it's almost like, why bother at 3? I don't know, shouldn't it be like?
If you lose it?
It happens, though, I had to get one.
I don't know, three just seems like.
I think they just want to cover the cost of the tags, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, we're not trying to make money, we're just trying to get the tag.
Yeah, I mean, at least they're.
Covered.
They are registering their dog.
What is a dumpster permit?
It's required to, if you have a fire and things burn down and you're cleaning up your house, we require you to have a dumpster. And the state of Massachusetts requires it and, and set a charge at $25, and we have never implemented it.
This is just if you have a house fire and you're doing cleanup? Oh, okay, because it, it didn't really say that.
So.
It actually might be just a dumpster in general.
For building purposes?
Paul, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
So the fee is going to be collected through the building department, right? Yes.
Sometimes, I would think.
So if you're building a new house and you have to have a dumpster to put the stuff in, you got to get a permit?
Yeah.
There's certain times when. It's only for a certain size dumpster.
Placement.
So if your project requires, it's large enough that it requires that, I can't remember the cubic yards, but that dumpster, which we require anyways under this fire department. So what we are going to do is incorporate that into the building permit because we ask if there's a dumpster on site as part of the building permit. And so the fee would be collected through the building permit. It all goes to the general fund anyway, so it's not like.
And it's part of the building inspector going out, like, he's going to go out, he's going to make sure the dumpster's in the right place and everything else is. Six or more, six.
That's little.
Thank you. Can we move on from the dumpster?
Yeah, let's go.
Uh, next item is a short-term rental cap and bylaw banning corporate ownership of short-term rentals. Before we talk about this, exactly what is the task force working on relative to short-term rentals?
I can answer why this is on here if you want, or is that what?
Fine.
No, I think she's, he's asking what, what the zoning task force is already working on.
What the zoning task force is always, already working on relative to short-term rentals.
Okay.
And corporate ownership.
Based on the last select board hearing, the, the task force is working on the fractional ownership and corporate ownership provisions that came out of Provincetown, and that's what we're evaluating. We didn't move forward with the short-term rentals because at the last meeting, this body said that you wanted to have further discussion. So we haven't acted upon that. The only thing I would say is because of all of the work we're doing with the business district, we've got to go heads down, literally starting January 3rd, we're meeting weekly to get all that work done. So if, if it's the intent of this group to have us look at short-term rentals, it's just, we need to get that into the work plan sooner than later. That would be my only comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're working on the corporate ownership?
And fractional.
Fractional ownership, yes.
And the corporate, also, yes.
Yeah, that's all in one. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jamie, do you want to say something?
Yeah, so it was, it was my understanding that we had two kind of outliers that we just wanted to clarify. One was that the task force is already working on the bylaw about, you know, the prevention of corporations from owning short-term rental certificates and having short-term rentals. But the question was, did we want to also have a no legacy clause? Or did we want to have a legacy clause on that, right? Is that kind of, like, did we want to provide a leg, provide legacy for any corporations that already had rental certificates? Wasn't that what you had said?
No, no, well, I think when we spoke to the Provincetown planners and assistant managers, I, I think there's sort of two separate things. One is legacy clauses, at least what Provincetown did was they put those into their short-term rental cap. So if you had more than two, they capped it at two. If you had more than two, you have a legacy, and that, that happened. That would all be around short-term rentals, which we did hear information, but we, we're not acting upon that now until, until this body tells us to address it.
Okay, I'm talking about the corporate.
We don't have any that we know.
We don't have any. Oh, okay, so we don't have to have a legacy. Okay, because that was one of the questions that was left open for me to try to find out at the end of that meeting. And also, the other, the second question was, you know, that P-Town has the two certificate cap per person, per deed. And they anticipated a petitioned article asking to reduce that probably to one, and the question was, did Eastham want to pursue that? And did we want to pursue it with or without a legacy? So that was the second part that I, that was, that was my takeaway of what I was supposed to be kind of following up on. So I figured that we would bring it back to the board to see, only because I know that the study that we had received had really indicated that if there was a cap in place, it was the individual certificate cap that was found to be effective. Jerry, I know you had read that in the study as well, and that Provincetown was, seemed to have luck with it, and that it was very welcomed by the community as well. Like I said, they're, they might be, you know, they seem to think that people want to actually make it a little more stringent. So did we also want to add that?
So this isn't a cap on the no, total number, it's just a cap on how many properties someone can own?
An individual, so an individual can only have two rental certificates in their name. So if your name is on a deed of a property, and that property has a rental certificate associated with it, that's one. So if your name is on two deeds, and both of those properties are used as short-term rentals, that's your cap. So for instance, if a married couple owns a home, and both of their names are on that deed, and they rent that home as a short-term rental, that's one for both of them because both their names are on that deed. So two is kind of a lot. I mean, you're talking about.
So would cap, you're, you're proposing to cap at two?
Per person.
Yeah.
So I, I guess I don't understand the point of this, Jamie, honestly. We have 5,906 units of housing in Eastham. We have 1,087 rentals, certificates. So we're less than 18%. So we have 2,724 year-round households and 3,182 part-time households, and only 1,000 rental certificates. And I think the cap of two would be problematic because now you're hitting, we require all of the cottage colonies. So that would be, I don't know, I might trust, a trust ownership sometimes, or a corporate ownership to a degree, but it's, the cottage colonies would have, I think we have some that have five, a couple that, one has seven, one has five, and we have, do have private property owners who own three properties and rent three properties. So that much I know. So there's those three.
I mean, I guess that's where the legacy would come in, right, Mary? So if these properties exist and we put this cap into place, we could choose to honor the legacy of the properties that currently exist, which would save all the cottage colony situation.
But your cap, if you did two per person?
Yeah.
Might be 10,000 because we have 5,906 units of housing. So if you let, I mean, what would the cap be and why?
I guess I got.
No, it's two.
Yeah, but what would the cap be?
The cap is, isn't a nu, it's not a numerical cap for the whole town. This is just on an individual person. So I can't have more than two short-term rental certificates on properties that my name is on the deed. It has nothing to do with a town-wide number. There, there's still no town-wide cap. It's just a cap on the individuals, and that's what it said in the study, right? If I remember correctly, Jerry, that that was the effective move as opposed to a town-wide cap. It was more effective to do individual caps per person. So.
But it doesn't have any effect on the cost of real estate, the number of affordable units we have, or the number of housing units we have.
But it does affect one person from reinvesting multiple times in property, and Eastham had buying up multiple properties and using them all as a short-term rental portfolio.
Okay, so what are you going to do if they want to do a year-round rental?
So this is just short-term.
Okay, so we got to figure this out in terms of sorting it out.
I know this is like stressful for you, Jackie.
It is stressful. I don't think we need it, Jamie, I think it's.
I think after hearing what P-Town presented and how well it seems to be received in their community and the benefit of it, that.
They did it for political reasons because people in the community thought that they should do it, and they had different warrant articles from different people suggesting different caps. So the town sort of compromised and put it together. But it did not come from any data that said that Provincetown should do it.
No, I, it was from, well, I'm saying the study that was included in that report that was in our packet from, was it?
UMass.
UMass, yeah.
UMass.
Had the data in it indicating that that was the preferred method. And so I.
I didn't see that, I saw the opposite.
I, I think we have, we're looking, we're looking, we're looking at a solution in search of a problem. I mean, right now, we're doing the corporate ownership, okay? And I think that's good that we ought to do that. I don't see that we should, at this point in time, put any, any kind of cap on how many rental properties you can have as an individual. I just don't, and I don't think we have a problem with that.
But I don't want to wait till we do. I mean, that's the point of doing all of these bylaws now, is doing them so that it doesn't become a problem because rental portfolios are real. I mean, and they're becoming more.
I just don't want you to do anything that's going to hurt people who live here that might own extra properties that they want to rent or, you know, have an accessory dwelling unit that they want to rent.
But that's the point of a legacy clause. And it doesn't affect year-round, and that's the point of the legacy clause is this would bypass the issue that we're running into with cottage colonies. Because if we gave them that legacy, they wouldn't get caught up in that process. I think Mary had.
I, what I, one of the things I took from the Provincetown, and it's sort of, is like Jackie and Jamie are both sort of correct. What they said with the Donahue study is it did not change the economics of, you know, creating more affordable housing or reducing the value of the property. They said at the end of the day, yes, they were getting political pressure to do this, they were getting amendments put before them, multiple amendments that hadn't really been vetted. They, they made the stance that they felt that it wouldn't necessarily create affordable housing, and it's not going to stop people from buying a vacation home. But it will provide a future disincentive around the economics of coming down and saying, buying a bunch of single-family homes to rent them. So it was very, they felt that, that the, the solution they crafted would sort of slow down this, you know, the, the opportunities for, for individual investors to buy multiple properties going forward. So it was really a forward-looking type of proposal as opposed to it's going to create anything in the existing property. They also are now pairing it with, and this is off the subject, but we got into a lot of, they said, we felt like we sort of put a, drew a line in the stand around the market. Then they started looking at, okay, how do we incentivize year-round rentals? And, and they have a variety of programs that they're, they're trying to do that. So they saw this as happening in tandem, you know? Sort of stop the forward investment speculation, and then follow it up with some targeted year-round rental incentives. So that, that's how they left that, so it's sort of a both sides.
Mary, if we do this, can we just take the Provincetown, basically rewrite it for our code? Or, I mean.
I mean, you know, that's what I said to Paul, I mean, there's two or three communities who have done this. They're, they're all modeling the same language, so it's probably one law firm who's done it.
Perfect.
So we could send it out to town council. I think the only, you know, we haven't evaluated, but this, the only thing from like, the health department we would probably want to see is really understanding the legacy. Okay, how many folks have multiples, you know, just so we understand how much we're grandfathering? And, and, you know, whether 201 is the right number is, you know, we just have to look at the data, but.
Yeah, I agree with that part.
So we just need a little bit, we'd need a little bit of data. Hillary has provided some data, but we just leave a little, little bit more fine tuning to come back to you. I mean, we'd basically be coming back to you with the recommendation.
Yeah, I, I think the, the idea here is to ask the task force to look at this a little more. And I guess, Mary, is that asking too much in, in, in this time period? But that's the way to go, to have the task force look at it, then come back to us with a, as, as we look at the kinds of questions. Like, one of the things I have, if you, what's the difference between a corporation owning 10 houses and putting up for short-term rental and Jerry Sirisell owning 10 houses and putting up for short-term rental? From the point of view of Eastham, it may, I don't see where it makes any difference. So that's something I think that maybe the, the task force can look at. And Mary, I guess the question is, is that too much of an ask in this time period with what you have on your plate?
I would just say two or three things. If we could get a little data from the health department, that would be important. If you let us know tonight, just because we've got so much on our plate. And, and then the third assumption would be, we would basically start from P-Town or some of those other towns, not trying to recreate new, new language on our own. So just so everyone understands that we'll start from where those towns came from and try to give you some sense of, okay, if we did this here, what impact does it have on Eastham? So it wouldn't be sort of, it, it isn't like the commercial district where we're looking at new zoning concepts and trying to, you know, introduce some brand-new things.
Right, and I think that's also what made it seem so opportune was that, was that we aren't reinventing the wheel with this one. You know, there's just, there is added information, but there's framework.
So Jerry, can they, if you vote to do this, can they just come back with a warrant article as opposed to having to have more discussions with the board? Because I think it is, we are at the time where, you know, our warrant is, is open and starting, and I know they have a lot of work to do already. So it would be helpful if you could let them.
Do their thing.
Tell you what the best way to, to do this would be.
That's fine by me.
Okay, great.
I, can I chime in too? I, I feel like in our discussions about some of the short-term rentals that we have in town and the number of people who have more than one is not like a super high number, and it might just be that they have two. And so I guess, I don't know for sure, but I feel like we haven't gotten to there's one person who has 10 sort of thing yet. But I would appreciate putting some guardrails in place so that we de-incentivize people from buying up a bunch of properties in Eastham and renting them as short-term rentals when they should be single-family homes.
Jerry, you want to comment?
Yeah, I just have one quick comment. The way that our database is set up right now, we don't determine if someone has a short-term rental. We have a seasonal rental and a year-round rental. So we don't have that class category of short-term rental on the books yet.
But we have short-term certificates.
Certificates through the.
No, we have seasonal and year-round. So seasonal would be short-term rentals.
So it's essentially.
But it could be 90 days, so it could be not short-term.
Which is not short-term, right? You rent for the month of July or month of August, it's not a short-term rental.
I would be surprised to find a property that rents for 90 days. But I mean, I would imagine the bulk of our.
Well, it's 30, really, is the short-term rental.
But I'm saying, I can't think of one property in town that rents for 90 days anymore. But I don't.
But don't we have a list of short-term rental, like for the tax purposes? And we get the short-term rental tax?
Yes, but we don't know, we know that they're renting for under 30 days. That's all we know.
Well, that's all we need.
That's all we need to know.
So we're gonna have to just change the names of the categories, Hillary.
Yeah, I think so. The only issue that I see is if this need is immediate, we've already sent out our rental certificate renewals in November, the end of November.
It's not gonna be immediate because it has to go to town meeting.
Right, so starting next.
2025.
I think everything's gonna have to start in 2025.
Because you'd need the AG to certify it, and that would happen in the fall. So by the time you send your next notice out, you would have time to.
So we basically have a year, you and.
From town meeting.
Your staff and I to figure this out somehow. And I think enforcement's gonna be hard. I think, what I worry about is that it will de-incentify people from getting a rental certificate. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, I guess that's where you come in with an overall cap.
You know, one of the things, Jackie, we didn't explore this too deeply, but Province Town, when they increased their fee, dedicated part of that to, there are now independent companies who do two things. One is they monitor all of the internet rental activity. So they can tell you about compliance. But what I didn't understand they did as well is, because they were concerned with the administration, they have contractually have taken a bunch of the administrative notifications. If there's a violation, the company is sending notifications. So, I mean, I don't know the details of that, but Province Town was pretty happy that administratively they offloaded a bunch of things, so it may be something to look at.
Okay. But we have time to look at it.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for talking about all that.
We ready to move on? Do we need a motion? What do we need?
Jackie's gonna take my cookies back.
I think we should have a motion as to whether we want the.
Zoning Task Force.
To work on this issue.
So I'll make a motion to ask the zoning task force to add to their agenda a cap on individual short-term rental certificates. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
The chair votes no. So it's four to one. Okay, thank you. Next item is liaison for the Capital Projects Committee. I am more than willing to do that if everybody else is in agreement. Or is there anyone else that would like to take that on?
I make a motion to make our liaison to the newly-formed Capital Projects Committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion? We'll vote. Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, committee resignations. I make a motion that we approve the resignation of Hilda Maroli as from the search committee.
Second.
Unless there's some discussions, let's vote. Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I am an aye. On the next committee appointments, Stephen Konatczik and Peter Wade are informational only. Those were Finance Committee appointees. So we need to approve Elaine Lipton for the Affordable Housing Trust, Fred Guedi for Capital Projects Committee, and Stephen Jonathan for the Capital Projects Committee.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay, vote. Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
It was a tongue-twister with Jamie and Amy next together. Amy?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. The next items are the road speed.
Hold on, can I just add an item? I'm so sorry.
Throw the whole beating off of Kilda here.
It's not a big deal, but we did have, we got, we got a deed restriction. So when we do these loans for low and moderate income rentals to do upgrades under the block grant program that we have with T.C. TRI. TRI. They have done one in Eastham, and they want to do a deed restriction. And so what I need you to do, if you are willing, is authorize me to sign the deed restriction document for 5050 State Highway.
I make a motion that we authorize Jackie to sign the deed restriction for 5050 State Highway.
Second.
Jamie, you look concerned.
I'm confused by what this is.
So usually, we have you vote it, and then I sign it.
Yep.
And it just, it's not on the agenda because it just came in, but I don't want to hold it over to January. I wanted to sign it and get it out. It's a pro forma thing. We've never not signed them because they've received a loan to do some work on their house that they rent year-round. And the year-round tenant is low and moderate income.
Oh, I see, and the deed restriction comes in.
Oh. They put the deed restriction on for the life of the loan. I think it doesn't, obviously, when they pay the loan back.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
I'm better now. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so let's vote. Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay, the speed, the two articles on road speed and speed signs are gonna be deferred to our next meeting, correct? And Adam's gonna come in and talk about that?
The chief is gonna come in and talk, mano a mano.
We do have a question about the next meeting that goes with those two. We are hoping that everyone would be okay with going into executive session at 4:30 with the Finance Committee from a presentation for Adam.
Wait, when is this?
It's our next meeting, so January 8th. It would be before the budget presentation. Adam's just presenting a presentation on staffing, and there's some sensitive information in the presentation, and he would like just the board to see it with the Finance Committee.
So it would be, there's safety concerns that are confidential.
An hour? I think we need an hour or just a half hour?
No, I think a half an hour.
Five would probably be fine.
So this is Monday, January 8th?
Yes.
Five would be better, yeah. I can do that.
So, well, do, everybody agree?
Suzanne's usually the one.
I'm fine.
Are you okay? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, it's fine.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Is it the first Monday of?
We can move January 8th till 5.
It's actually the second Monday because the first Monday's a holiday.
Well, that doesn't stop Brewster.
No.
Okay. Any more interruptions?
No, no, I think we're good. We're good right now.
We need to vote on the minutes of December 4th. You have a motion except the minutes of December 4th.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I got a couple of things on other business that I would like to bring up real quickly.
Sorry.
We have got a number of resident emails, okay? And I don't know whether any of them have been answered or not.
The pickleball?
Because people don't like to copy me on their answers if they answer them. I wish they would. We have two pickleball ones.
We have to get better at copying, Jerry, I mean.
I just think we should all understand what the answers are. So we have two pickleball ones.
They're kind of identical, all the pickleball ones.
Yes, they are, yep.
So.
I thought it was pretty good showing all the other towns, though. They were good.
Yeah, what they don't, some of them, what they don't tell you is, like, Wellfleet charges $20 an hour for pickleball.
No, they did list all that, one of them. One of them did.
So I think we can answer them all together. I understand that they want to tell us exactly what they want. And I think that the thing that's missing with the pickleball group is that what they don't understand is that we are listening to them. And then the Rec Commission is also telling me what they need, and we're trying to find a middle ground.
Okay, so can I respond to them that way? We appreciate all your comments. We're also getting comments from the Recreation Commission. We'll pull that all together, and we'll come up with a proposal.
Right, and I think we have the proposal pretty much. It's just, instead of three mornings, we're gonna do two mornings and one afternoon. And we're gonna do the afternoon's time slot from June 1st to July 15th. And then if, on July 15th, it hasn't been used, we will move it to a morning slot. We just want to make sure that it's not one group of people.
And we're doing the $50.
Well, we're gonna have a fee hearing, so you guys can change that figure if you want to. But $50, just so you know, there's three three-hour periods, so nine hours a week over 17 weeks, $50 is 33 cents an hour.
So I'm just, I'm more than willing to draft a response, unless you want to do it. But I'm more than willing to draft a response, but just, the question is, how much do I want to say? Just we'll take your input, we're evaluating it, we're gonna come up.
Come to the fee hearing.
We're gonna come up and.
And, I mean, we can also send them the final fee memo that Christine is gonna do for your fee hearing. They can call on, they can come on and.
Tell them we're gonna send them the my.
Yell at us at the fee hearing, too, if they want to.
Okay, attend the fee hearing.
Which is gonna be the meeting on the February 5th.
February 5th.
And it's Zoom, so they can come from wherever they are.
Okay, very good. So that's two. That takes care of two. Laura Kelly, pesticides.
I didn't get that one.
I didn't get any of them.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't sent to us.
Yeah, no, I didn't get that one.
Maybe, maybe I got, but it didn't.
I got Jackie forwarded to you.
I forwarded to everybody, I think, didn't I?
So this, yes, you did. This was at the Orleans Fall Town Meeting. Residents voted 68% in favor of pesticide reduction, home rule petition. Then the Lawrenceville County Assembly of District. Oh, I saw that one. Resolution number 12.
Yeah, it was a month ago.
So the question is, Jackie's comment was just FYI as potential article. Do we want to pursue this or not?
What happened with the Orleans article?
They passed it as special legislation. It's now at the State House.
But nothing's happened at the State House yet.
Did the town, did the town put it forth?
Yes.
Orleans did, yes.
Oh, okay.
So basically, Laura is scheduled, if you want to discuss this, she's scheduled to come in on your next meeting and go over it with you.
Okay.
Our budget meeting?
Yes.
I don't know if that's a good time to do that.
I mean, I.
Did we put it on the 5th or did we put it on?
The 22nd.
So my response to her would be, you're on the agenda for such-and-such a day to discuss this.
Yeah, she knows that.
January 22nd.
If the board, well, I think the question Jackie's asking is, does the board want that?
I've already communicated with her, too, and gave her that date, so.
I mean, I'm open to her presenting it, but it doesn't mean we have to adopt it, obviously.
I'm just trying to clear these out because they kind of stick around. And then I got the question.
Now, we have done some of these. We just didn't CC you, and I'm sorry about that.
If you've done these, let me know, then I won't respond.
We did Laura Kelly.
You did Laura Kelly.
So I have a question about, when we get these emails in, does reply work from that email? Or do you have to do a new email?
No, you have to copy whoever sent it and send them a different email because you can't just reply.
So that's, you lose the chain. I hate it because you lose the whole.
Well, what I do is, I copy what they said. I give them, I write my response, I copy all of you, okay, and you and you.
I know.
And then I put at the bottom of the.
You're the best.
At the bottom of the.
You're the best at this. We're failing.
Let's keep on saying that. And at the bottom of the email, I put down what they said. So I restate what they said, so it's there. So the chain is kind of there.
I guess forward it to, I mean, one of the reasons I think I don't respond to things super often is because of those exact steps.
Right.
So I didn't respond to anything, and you didn't get it.
I just think we owe these residents answers, that's all. And then I responded to Denise. She said, we're doing a great job with children. I said, thank you. And the last one I've got is from the guy in Province Town Independent who wanted to know what we do relative to public comment.
I responded.
You responded to that?
We answered. Thank you, because I had no comment on that.
And you wrote an article last week.
See that?
There was an article last week, yeah.
They already printed it.
Well, I haven't read it yet. I haven't read the Independent yet.
From page.
If I had gotten a copy of the email, I would have known already in advance. Okay.
We're not in it.
You want me to get a copy of the Orleans pesticide thing, and we can stick it in your next packet? You can take a look at it?
That'd be great. That'd be nice.
Yeah, and it sounds like we're gonna be a little busy, too, right, coming up?
We're gonna be very busy now because we're in the season. This is the season, the thick of it, the busy season.
Yeah, I guess I would like to see the Orleans, what they pass.
Yep.
And I guess I don't, I'm not personally feeling like I need a super-long presentation from Laura.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, it's hard.
I told her 15 minutes, max.
Even that's.
We told her 10 minutes.
Well, maybe we just need to.
I mean, maybe we need to set up.
No, it was a two-way. You guys were very interested in.
Okay, moving on. Is there any other business or correspondence that anyone would like to bring up? Do you have any other interruptions you'd like to give?
No, I'm good.
Kayla's got something. Hold on, Kayla's got it.
Okay, so everyone's sweatshirts. I sent out the proof.
Yeah.
Jamie, Suzanne already wanted their name on it. Amy added theirs. So Jerry or Art, would you like your name on your sweatshirt?
It doesn't look like that, though. It doesn't have that little logo on it, does it?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'll be on the left side, the logo on the right side.
You don't want the logo?
You just want the blanket.
I just want it, Eastham, Town of Eastham, and then.
Your name? I could probably do that for you.
Yeah, I don't want the big logo. It's a target.
It's not on your back and this big.
Town of Eastham, you can put my name to it. That'd be great, if you could do that. If it's too much trouble, don't do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Jerry?
Sure, you might, let me, are you muted?
No.
You might as well put my name on it, too, slick word and stuff. The logo is fine. I don't care.
Now, do you want your small name or your formal name?
Oh, the small Jerry. Not Gerald. No, I don't know who Gerald is. Jerry with a G. Jerry with a J.
Jerry with a J.
Sounds good.
Gerald with a G. That confuses me when I email.
Okay, that's okay. Anything else, Kayla? Yeah, I have one. I'm sorry?
Go for it, Jerry.
Some of them have some.
Something for the future, not immediate. I've done some things, and other towns have been passing ordinances and things to try and improve affordable housing by giving exemptions that are targeted to rentals, to people below 80% of AMI, and also for residents to, if they are below 80% of AMI, they can be exempted from the Community Preservation Act 3% add-on. Those are some things I think we should look at because unlike, now, I know Suzanne and Jamie disagreed with this, but unlike the residential tax exemption, which is across the board, these are things that are much more targeted to people who are, who need it, below 80%, below AMI. So I think those are some things that we should eventually look at, as other towns have done it. I know Brewster's done some, and Province Town has done some.
Yeah, I think when we talk about the RTE in January, which is the 22nd, I'm guessing.
Yeah, we should add that to it.
We should just, yeah, discuss those options, because that's the whole point of us discussing it in January. We should just, yeah, discuss those, those options, because that's the whole point of us discussing it in January.
Right, is to talk about tools.
Talk about tools to offset rather than doing that to do the other.
Thank you.
Motion.
And, and my thing, while I was like maybe a little kidding, was maybe not super kidding about second and fourth Mondays. I just like endlessly have a work conflict and it's kind of stressful for me. So I didn't know if that was ever an option or if it was like absolutely no-go.